Yeah.
Right there.
I'm trying to get this.
That's fine.
I like so.
That's okay. It's always.
Oh, yeah. It's ridiculous.
I should have sent you. That's why. It's almost ridiculous. Once that happens, then everybody loses their mind. That's the thing. Just not around. Anytime you want to. Just call. I can say that. So this is a word. We're here. Japanese. That wasn't how they. That's for me.
Did he log out?
He's still in there.
Definitely.
This does just.
But he did the time. After we check.
I mean, individual age. God, thank you so much. He just has so many. And it just is everything. So just one now.
Don't fire the teacher.
Try to fire us now.
I wasn't.
Yeah. No, I didn't.
I swear to me. Oh, I'm sorry, man.
No, I know.
I don't wear the colors last year. She made that.
I know, right? I mean, order. How you see it?
I don't know the basketball.
What do you make of all this? No, we will. Tenure dust bowl trying to kill me. If I had a traffic. Can't. We can't. We can't let you. I'm glad, right? You don't even have guys out there that is much dirt now. That wind was coinciding. The whole case.
You must not really go. Right now. Come down for some excitement. Glad to hear your thoughts. Now, stand up.
Hi. If you don't come in. Wow. 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 Do you know what people's under where I see today? A lot of it. I've seen a lot of it. Because that's real. Bring him in. Is this playing? I'm a little. No. Also, the Taylor channel. Yes. Yes.
One of them.
Okay. I don't know.
Then I want to. For you. I'd be my guest, but I love.
In regards to. Or was related to sewer rates. It just may happen that you need to. Sorry. The month. I just got. It's two thousand and twenty eight. I like to put it for us. I have this and you have fourteen. So the average here is seven eighteen. And it turned to ten. And it's in. For first two thousand. Yeah. And so this is about this. And I'm saying. There. Shall I say L two? Two dollars as well. L two. So. And so if I switch it, you use your connection. How much? How much were they? They were video. How much?
Why? Because I do. Me on the dump. And the.
I don't know.
It's warm.
This. Okay. So it's. These ones. Like. And that one's.
They were all together. It was real. Like I was walking.
There's something. There's something. Or the. It's still. So. See, the best way you can handle this. Are we all? Do you know a record? A record? So. He doesn't. So he's. More to. So we have. So. So you can take. So. He take. So. So you have. The. 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 Okay. So connection changes. And. Your customers changes. So you definitely. He won't have. Or. Okay. I. It's. 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 So see that. I have a thing that that you will get met. Here's. That. And then we're. And then we're. So. So you have to be insulated. I'm. That you're. That's. There's also. Yes. And that's just. I know. So. This. That's. Well. I'm proud of you. Seems. Oh, yeah. Perfect. It's working. It's working. It's. No. So.
We came over for them. They kept. Remember the. Yeah.
That's why. Those two. Yeah. Yeah. And last year. He said. On summer. I try. I love that. And that was. Yes. And it's. Yes. Sure. Like. Like. I was talking. I was.
That's good for you. If you're.
Yes. Yes. No, no. That's. That's. Very bright. About. Chester. Yes. And that is. That's your. That's your. And those. Oh. So. Uh. So we're here. Backside. Somebody. Backside. Yeah. Yeah. Who's. Pretty good. Sure. Oh. What about me? It had to test. Last Saturday. Now like. I love the guy. Now. Troy. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. I never heard. Yeah. They replaced the. That's. You would not look at a sense. And I would see. Parents.
No, we're. We really did change. He doesn't.
I thought we turned it back. There's. Now I just got the same. You have to prefer. South.
Still. I'm.
What are. Some.
I'm. But I can come back. There's one of them.
Okay.
Very hot. She. teaching. Watch. It's.
Okay. Let me. See. That you just. She's. She's. We're saying.
This year. I.
He's. So.
Please. Return.
My.
I. I'm. All right. I'm. So. One. It's. I'm.
One.
But it's not. You are near.
I know.
It's not. He's also.
I'm.
No.
Just. I'm. Carol.
One, two. She's.
After. Last. Yeah. She's. Sorry. I'm. I'm. She's. What is. I'm. It's just. Another child. About. The base. Are you.
Both when I. Money. Hit the ground. It's kind of. Actually. She got. Look. She's got. Brand. I'm. Got. She's got. Yes. Yeah. She's. Just. Took. Very.
So her whole. Frame. I need. Talking. Yep. Sorry. Chair legs. I'm sure that's.
Welcome to Elizabeth Town City Council Regular Meeting from March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And I'd like to ask Councilman Tim Isaacs if he'd lead us in the indication, please.
Right. Dear Heavenly Father, we are blessed to live in a strong and growing community with an abundance of potential. Lord, you make it clear that service to others is one of the primary foundations of our faith. And we are thankful for this opportunity to serve our neighbors that make up the city. Lord, we ask your blessing for the people that make up the many different departments that provide the need to services to help the city to thrive. We ask a special blessing on the five newest officers that were sworn in last week as they begin their time protecting our community. Lord, with spring once again nearly at our doorstep, we are excited about the potential to grow and continue to be a place people want to live, work, and play. Lord bless us all as we try to raise our families in this wonderful community in your name. Amen.
Amen. If you join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, no. He been in. He been in life. In that. Life.
Okay. We're going to start with approval of minutes of March third, twenty twenty-five. If I can get a motion in a second, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Judge Howard, first reading by motion of ordinance number six, twenty twenty-five, general obligations bond for outdoor music venue. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
All right. The title of this ordinance is in ordinance for the city of Elizabeth Town, Kentucky, authorizing and approving the issuance of general obligation bond series of twenty twenty-five A. In the aggregate principal amount not to exceed forty-seven million dollars for the purpose of financing, the acquisition, construction, and equipping. Equipping of an outdoor music facility for the use and benefit of the citizens of the city. Authorizing the levy of a direct annual tax on all taxable property within the city, if necessary, in addition to all other taxes in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds when and as the same become due. Authorizing the establishment of certain funds to provide for the payment of the bonds, authorizing the publicly advertised competitive sale of said bonds, and the dispersment of the proceeds thereof. And authorizing certain other actions with regard to the financing and the acquisition, construction, and equipping of the project generally. To assure the payment of the bonds, it is necessary that the city authorize a levy of a bond tax sufficient for that purpose. Provided, however, it is now anticipated that revenues derived from the project and other available city funds will be sufficient to meet the debt service requirements of the bonds without the collection of the bond tax. That by the adoption of this ordinance, the city covenants with the owners of owners of the bonds, that it shall, if necessary, collect each year a bond tax in a sufficient amount and appropriate in its annual budget, together with other monies available to it, an amount sufficient to pay the debt charges on the bonds as defined in section sixty-six point zero one one subsection four of the Kentucky Revised Statute. That section six C of the ordinance which levies these bonds reads as follows. That pursuant to section one fifty-seven of the Constitution of Kentucky and section sixty-six point one 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 of the Bond Act, there is hereby levied in the city hereby covenants to collect each year that the bonds remain outstanding, the bond tax in an amount sufficient to provide for the full payment of the principal and interest requirements of said bond. Said bond tax to be collected only if other taxes or revenues of the city are not sufficient to pay the principal and interest requirements of the bonds as same become due. The bonds are to be sold at a publicly advertised competitive sale. The bonds will mature over a term not to exceed thirty years. The ordinance establishes a sinking fund to provide for the payment of the principal and interest requirements of the bonds as same become due. A copy of this ordinance is available at the office of the city clerk. The summary that I have just read was prepared by David Malone of Steptoe and Johnson, who is the bond counsel for the city. And David is present here today and can answer any legal questions that you have about the bond ordinance. That constitutes a first reading.
So clarify something for everyone that may not understand when you talk about bond tax and what our payment method is going to be, that we're not enacting a tax to be able to pay those bonds off. For the outdoor concert venue. Because I don't want anybody to think that we're establishing or enacting a new tax for the outdoor concert venue.
This is what's called a general revenue bond, which is the most typical type of bond that cities and counties issue. It achieves the lowest interest rate. And so, no, it is not anticipated that any additional taxes will have to be imposed. We've done the analysis. Your financial advisors are here today as well and believe that the current sources of revenue available to the city and to tourism will be sufficient to pay the bonds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. With that, we will move to ordinance number seven, twenty twenty-five, annexation of two oh four Jackie Street. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
This ordinance annexes property at two oh four Jackie Street, owned by Paul and Susan Branningham as trustees of the Branningham Living Trust, totaling totaling approximately point eight acres. The property will be zoned urban residential general, which is R four, upon annexation based on the planning commission recommendation. The owners gave written consent to the annexation, and the city gave the required forty-five day notice to Hardin County. Full text of the ordinance can be found by contacting the city clerk. This constitutes a first reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to ordinance number eight, twenty twenty-five, annexation of three twenty Pear Orchard Road Northwest. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
This ordinance annexes property at three twenty Pear Orchard Road Northwest, owned by Omni Land and Development LLC, totaling approximately twenty-five point eight acres. The property will be zoned suburban residential or R two upon annexation based on the planning commission recommendation. The owners gave written consent to this annexation, and the city gave the required forty-five day notice to Hardin County. The full text of this ordinance can be found by contacting the city clerk. And again, this is a first reading.
Any discussion on three twenty Pear Orchard Road Northwest?
Um. I want to thank planning because I was there sitting in for Marty last week. And there was, because of the vastly expanded notice that you guys did, there were a lot more people there. Um. Not upset, but just curious about the process. And that was a step in the right direction, I thought. Um. And being able to. It took a little longer to answer some of their questions, but I think it was good, especially with everything that's going to be happening on Pear Orchard Northwest. Um. I think you guys came off as a good resource for information if they wanted to know what was going on. Um. But I appreciate you guys making that effort to to expand the notice process. I know it's not that much fun, but I appreciate the effort.
Good job, Joe. Anybody else? Then we'll move to ordinance number nine, twenty twenty-five, annexation of seventy nineteen South Wilson Road. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
This ordinance annexes property at seventy nineteen South Wilson Road, owned by Imaging Co., State Gloria Compton Executrix, totaling approximately one point one acres. The property will be zoned regional commercial or C three upon annexation based on the planning commission recommendation. The owners gave written consent to the annexation, and the city gave the required forty-five day notice to Hardin County. The full text of this ordinance can also be found by contacting the city clerk. This is a first reading.
Any discussion? Ordinance number ten, twenty twenty-five, repealing and replacing previous ordinance number zero seven, twenty fourteen, relating to sewer rates, creating and establishing new sewer rates. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
This will be also a first reading by summary. Uh. This ordinance repeals and replaces previous ordinance relating to sewer rates, creating and establishing new sewer rates. I'm not going to go through all of the sewer rates, but I'm going to kind of hit the highlights here. Uh. The rates and charges to residents and users of the existing municipal sanitary sewer system of the city are hereby fixed and established on a monthly basis as follows. These are for the monthly sewer rates for the bills rendered after July first of twenty twenty-five. For the first two thousand gallons, the minimum bill will be fourteen dollars and forty-six cents. Over two thousand gallons, it will be six dollars and thirty-six cents per one thousand dollars. And this occurs over the next four years. After July first of twenty twenty-six, the first two two thousand gallons, the minimum bill will be sixteen dollars and seventy cents. After July first of twenty twenty-seven, uh, the first two thousand dollars will be eighteen dollars and ninety-five cents. And after July first of twenty twenty-eight, the first two thousand gallons will be nineteen dollars and fifty-two cents. There will also be, under this ordinance, surcharges for extra strength waste. And if you want to know what all of those symbols mean, um, we'll bring Cory up here to explain all of those for us. Uh. There is also a surcharge for hauled waste, waste that's hauled in bulk to our treatment plant. Leachate from Pearl Hollow landfill will be at twenty-eight dollars and fifteen cents a ton. Other types of hauled waste will be thirty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents per ton. In additional, the connection fees for residential connections, single-family housing, will be one thousand five hundred dollars. For multi-family housing, it will be two thousand dollars per building plus three hundred dollars per unit. The non-residential connection fee for buildings less than ten thousand square feet will be two thousand dollars. From ten thousand square feet to fifty thousand will be three thousand five hundred. And above fifty thousand square feet will be five thousand dollars. And then the category identified as significant industrial user connection fee will be ten thousand dollars. The full text of this ordinance can be located by contacting the city clerk. And again, this is a first reading by summary.
Couple of things I want to clarify, just because we are very careful when we do any kind of fee raising or tax raising or anything else when it comes to public money. Our connection fees, we have not raised since nineteen ninety-nine, and we have not had a sewer rate change since two thousand and twelve. And in two thousand and twenty-three, we had a study done, and it's a little old now, but I will tell you, when we did the study, uh, the proposed change that we were going to do at that time from the present number that was the fee at that time, still kept us at the bottom of multiple cities that were charging anywhere from forty-three dollars all the way down to twenty-six dollars. And we were going to go from eighteen eighty to twenty-two oh nine. So we were changing from the present to propose, and we're still last on the list in how much that we were charging. So we are very cognizant of the fact that, uh, with inflation and the economy the way it is right now, that people don't have a ton of extra money. And we still want to keep our fees as low as we possibly can. But like I said, since we have not changed since two thousand and five on the rate, or two thousand and twelve on the rate change in connection fees since nineteen ninety-nine, uh, we did have to make an adjustment, but we're still lower than just about all the surrounding sewer and wastewater treatment plants around. So I want to make sure that we're clear on that, and we didn't jump this up to make a big bunch of money because we're not. We're just trying to keep on pace with inflation and what we need to do to be able to pay for costs associated associated with treating sewer. So. Y'all have anything to add to that? With that, we will move on to Municipal Order thirteen, twenty twenty-five, accepting bid for Harvard Drive sanitary sewer replacement project. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Judge Howard.
At a regular meeting of the city council held on the date set out below, after first being read, a motion to adopt the following municipal order was duly made, seconded, and approved. Whereas the city prepared bid documents and publicly advertised the project and received five bids that were publicly opened on March five of two thousand and twenty-five for the Harvard Drive sanitary sewer replacement project. Now be it ordered by the Elizabeth Town City Council to accept the bid from Schroder Construction, Inc. for Harvard Drive sanitary sewer replacement project in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Be it further ordered that the mayor and/or his designate is hereby authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order, including but not limited to signing all contracts, documents, obtaining the necessary permits, and approving change orders with the aggregate amount not to exceed a hundred and five thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. Read, adopted, and approved the seventeenth day of March.
It's a good bid, Michael. Any discussion? Need a motion in a second to adopt them.
Motion.
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Good work. That brings us to public comments. Anybody have any public comments they would like to make? And that brings us to City Council Information Items. Our next meeting will be the twenty-fourth of March, two thousand and twenty-five, and, this is the best announcement, Wayback Wednesday movie series at the Historic State Theater, starting this Wednesday at noon, and they will feature Driving Miss Daisy. So if you have not seen that or haven't seen it in a while, noon on Wednesday would be a good time to go to the State Theater and watch that.